Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of October tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel twenty-nine until our next regularly scheduled meeting on October twenty-fourth. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. This is the first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in in addressing the committee during public participation. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting, and I will recognize you for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Pelich. A couple of items. I know our student advisory committee was mentioning this as well, but didn't want to invite community members to come out this coming Friday evening, October twelfth, which will be the first athletic contest played on the new field at Shrewsbury High School. David J. Adams Memorial Field at Central One Federal Credit Union Stadium. There will be a field hockey game at three-thirty in the afternoon, followed by the Second Annual Colonial Way Experience where we will block off the back driveway of the school. There'll be all kinds of different booths, student clubs, various activities for kids and adults alike, as well as food trucks. And admission to that also gains admission to the football game, which will be at seven o'clock. So we're looking forward to that grand opening of that facility. It's an excellent project. We're looking forward to getting to using it this coming Friday. I also wanted to mention, last Friday was a no-school day for students. It was our second full professional development day of the school year. The teacher professional development was focused on department work during the morning session. There were some excellent examples of ways that various departments were advancing our strategic priorities and goals. In the afternoon, they focused on the program we've had for the last few years, the what we call our pathways program. Our individual educators can choose one of several pathways of certain topics to explore more in-depth and figure out ways to apply it to their work, either individually or in collaboration with their colleagues. And Friday was also the one full professional development day that our paraprofessionals also come with us and spend the day learning. In the morning, they had a special speaker, Carrie Stack, and who focused on being able to have excellent collaboration, positive skills, and building positive culture. And in the afternoon, they worked with Ms. Malone around some compliance training. But we appreciated there the work that all of our educators did on this past Friday. Want to commend in particular Ms. Clodder for organization of the day, as well as our other leaders, members of the leadership team, for organizing what I think was a very successful day of learning for our educators, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee Report. School districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. We are going to hear from Shrewsbury High School's SAC tonight. If you guys want to come forward, take your seats. The agenda for our SAC report is enclosed. Committee members with our meeting materials. Of course, Mr. Wensky is our school committee liaison to the SAC. If you guys want to start off as usual by just going down the line and introducing yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Precious Singh. I'm a senior and I'm the chairperson for SAC.
My name's Erica Hanlon. I'm a senior.
I'm Polina Sgosi. I'm a senior.
I'm Sophia Pang. I'm a junior.
And I'm Max Evers, and I'm a sophomore.
So the first item on our agenda for this evening is start of the school year.
Students began the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school year by welcoming the new freshman class and adjusting both to technology updates in our large student population. On August twenty-third, freshman orientation was held to welcome the class of two thousand and twenty-two to SHS. The night ran smoothly thanks to the help of upperclassmen involved in the mentor volunteer program, MVP. Students were accepted into the MVP program after a competitive application process that took place last spring. These student leaders continued to make the freshmen feel welcome throughout the year by interacting with them during homeroom on a weekly basis. At orientation, MVP members helped aid the intimidating but exciting transition for the freshmen from middle school to high school by taking them on tours of SHS, explaining their schedules to them, and answering any questions they had. Additionally, the new entrant assistant team is helping new students to the district adjust to the high school. We are very excited to welcome the class of two thousand and twenty-two.
The beginning of the school year saw our school participate in the service learning school supply drive. The whole school pulled together to donate school supplies to Belmont Community School and Worcester, and SHS and surrounding Shrewsbury Public Schools impressively donated forty boxes full of educational resources, displaying our giving and helpful school environment. Student leaders from SHS and its Service Learning Advisory Board also collected supplies outside stables for two weekends. We're proud to begin the year united in service.
Shrewsbury High School welcomed a relatively large freshman class of four hundred and sixty-one students. With the net increase, we see hallways becoming more crowded, making it difficult to get to class on time. But the most noticeable impact of high student population for the student body is lunches. Sometimes it can be difficult to find seating despite the continuation of a fourth overflow lunch. With an increasing student body, it can also be difficult for extracurriculars to accommodate the amount of students who wish to be involved. For example, the speech and debate team had to cut thirty-five auditionees this year in order to keep the number of participants under ninety. However, we also appreciate the growing number of opportunities presented for students, such as the newly created freshman soccer team and the continued diversity of clubs that are available. Another noticeable aspect of school conditions relates to the heat wave felt during the first two weeks of school. Despite some ninety-six degree temperatures on the third floor, SHS students persevered and focused in on having a great start to the year.
Our technological team has been working phenomenally hard these past couple of weeks to ensure that all students are well-adjusted to the iPad program at Shrewsbury High School. A new policy regarding restrictions has been implemented this year for freshmen, which eliminates two-factor authentication, a difficulty our IT team has been working to resolve for a while now. Two-factor authentication allowed students to download apps by authenticating through their phones in addition to entering a password, compromising the ability of IT to supervise app downloads. While freshmen are disappointed that this change removed the App Store from iPads, no major issues have come up so far. The IT team believes that once the policy is well-incorporated, iPads will be much more efficiently managed.
The second item on our agenda this evening is leadership and school involvement.
Our already dependable and high-achieving student body continues to take on various opportunities for leadership and wellness in our school. Leading into the school year, SHS students saw an abundance of leadership conferences, such as the annual captain summit, senior and junior seminars, and most recently, the student council leadership summit on September thirteenth. Approximately eighty student leaders from the sophomore, junior, and senior classes participated in this two-hour-long conference that took place during the school day. At the summit, discussions were held concerning school unity and how to increase support across activities. Ideas about potentially creating an SHS fan club, as well as a system of leaving encouraging notes before important extracurricular events, were brought up. The calendar app Zaha was also reintroduced at the summit, with the hopes that it can be used to organize all extracurricular events in the future. Overall, the meeting was a resounding success, and we hope to invite all club leaders next spring for the next meeting. So these club leaders can build more important connections with one another.
The Student Wellness Ambassador Team, or SWAT, a new club created last spring, aims to improve the mental health of SHS and plan Wellness Week in the spring. SWAT was founded in April of this year by student council and several faculty members, including Mrs. Nguyen and Mrs. Burnick, and has already gotten great student involvement with twenty current members. SWAT held its first meeting of the year on Wednesday, September nineteenth, where students began creating a video about the definition of success to share with the school community, as well as plan its school-wide celebration of health, working towards Wellness Week in the spring. This event will highlight ways for students to manage stress, social pressures, and physical health, as well as raise awareness about health issues in the school. SWAT has high hopes for this event and is working hard to achieve this goal.
In August leading into the school year, one hundred and seven high school seniors participated in application boot camp, led by Mrs. Floyd and the SHS School Counseling Department. Students received essay advice from college admissions counselors, participated in mock interviews and financial aid discussions, and received assistance in filling out the Common Application. Overall, it was considered a huge success, as seniors across the board agree that it aided in reducing the stress surrounding the college process before the school year began. We are grateful for the help and opportunities that the school counseling department has provided for us.
In addition to help inform and aid the nervousness of senior parents, SHS Counseling also hosted their annual Nuts and Bolts Night on September eighteenth. At the event, school counselors provided information to students and parents about the college application process, with an informative Q and A section at the end. The department uploaded the materials for those who were unable to attend. They also visited classrooms, providing seniors with the information, and completed a stress workshop. This program was implemented about five years ago with the help of school psychiatrists and offers all students strategies for wellness. The SHS community greatly appreciates the huge amount of communication and information provided by our wonderful counseling department.
The third and final agenda is SHS Spirit.
There's no better way to kick off the year than with some school pride. SHS is starting the school year with numerous events to showcase our school spirit. SHS Spirit Week, which usually occurs during the last week of September, was unfortunately postponed until the third week of October. The decision was made as a result of the delayed opening of the new turf field. In order for the spirit to lead into homecoming weekend, which includes the senior cookout and a multitude of athletic events, it was necessary for the track to be open at the end of Spirit Week. Because of the track, which will be finished this Friday, October twelfth, many home games needed to be moved to other locations. Although students are disappointed, the entire community is anticipating the grand opening coming up this week for Colonial Way.
As in past years, many SHS students are involved with the Spirit of Shrewsbury, which occurred during the last week of September. Various clubs, including the robotics team, the speech and debate team, and also sports teams, including volleyball, crew, and soccer, participated. The Spirit of Shrewsbury Fall Festival was at Oak Middle School on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, and Sunday, the thirtieth, and featured great food, games, and even concerts. While the festival was a great success, the parade on Sunday was clearly the highlight and garnered the most attention from the community. There were also smaller events around the town, such as the Knights of Columbus Five-K that many students, including both cross-country teams, boys and girls, participated in. Overall, the Spirit of Shrewsbury was a resounding success that featured many diverse pieces of our community and got us all excited for the year to come in our town.
SHS students are very excited about Colonial Way coming up this Friday, October twelfth. With last year being the first time student council has run this fundraiser, the Shrewsbury community is excited for the event to reoccur this fall. Colonial Way will lead up to the Shrewsbury versus Algonquin football game. It's a great way for the community to bond with food trucks, activities, and booths run by over twenty-five different clubs and teams at SHS. It will be a very eventful and exciting grand opening to the new turf field.
That concludes our presentation for this evening. We're now happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, SAC. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Consano.
Thank you for coming. It's nice to see you all again. My question's around the enrollment that you were talking about, and I think you hit on the two pieces we hear about, lunch and the hallways. Are there other areas that you're finding that enrollment is impacting your experience, maybe like the parking lot or other pieces?
So they added a lot of new parking over the summer, so
That's right.
There's not, I don't think there's a huge problem with parking, really. I think the only other thing would just be in general, like we mentioned the speech and debate team, but also like a lot of other clubs are getting really, really large, which is great because so many students are getting involved, but it's also just so, like so many students and almost all.
Yeah, and then also there's a matter of like, right now, I think every single classroom in the school is being in use at like, pretty much all hours of the day.
Right.
So like, while class sizes haven't been like impacted severely by that, it's a new development.
Sure.
There's also some issues, not issues, but there have some, been some things about now teachers have to share classrooms, of course, because of the growing number of students and teachers. So many clubs that are maybe meeting after school, as in like math team meets in Mr. Collins' room after school sometimes, but now that there's another teacher that also might need to have some extra help sessions, it's causing some movement.
Right, some juggling, yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Fritz.
Along the lines that Ms. Consano mentioned with enrollment, there's a fourth lunch was added.
Oh, right.
I remember hearing this talk about, you know, a while ago, what time is that lunch? Is it really early or late?
So what happens is if you, there's certain science classes, I think American studies, that it's two periods long. So they have a class during fifth and sixth period, and it's all together. So if they have that class, then they'll have lunch a half hour before everyone else during fifth period and then stay in their class for the entirety of sixth period.
Yeah, I think it was actually like eleven fifteen that was the overflow lunch.
Too early, early enough, yeah.
Also the research methods classes.
Yeah, but oh, it's not a full, oh, like it's not a full fourth lunch. It's just for those select classes.
Okay, that helps with that overflow. And then the application boot camp, you said a hundred and seven students. Is there a max for the number of students that can attend that boot camp?
Yes, so many, a lot of students actually signed up for it, and many students actually even applied late and got accepted. I think there might have been a couple students that applied late and were wait-listed. So we were able to accommodate most of the people that signed up.
But not all?
No.
There was, there was a couple that, but I think the majority were.
You wanted to cut in. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wensky, just one question. And great, great presentation, by the way. Really appreciate your appearance here. Gives us some perspective on what's happening in high school, so thank you. With regards to enrollment, now that we're seven weeks in, in terms of the hallway congestion that you described, do you think there was more chaos at the beginning of the year with a new class coming in, not really familiar with how to navigate? Supposed to now, maybe it's a little smoother. I mean, you can only do so much with congestion, but.
I feel like, in a way, it's kind of unavoidable because there's still so many students, and everyone uses like the two main stairwells. But, I mean, obviously it's a little bit reduced because people are getting used to their schedules and finding better ways, but it's still like a noticeable weight in the hallway.
Yeah, we have a couple hallways or like particular locations that usually get very congested, and then some hallways that are like fine.
It's usually the back stairwells. I'm sure since a lot of the new students feel most comfortable using the main stairwells that they know. The back stairwells are a little less congested, but like many busy times during transitions, the two main staircases will be like backed up for a solid like two, three minutes.
And we talked about this, there's like a social element, so you know a lot of people would want to talk with their friends on a primary class. Yeah, sure, your friend goes down the B stairs and it's, that's, it results in congestion and it's basically unavoidable. So what I'd say experienced students try to do is they just try to go around that, take the back stairs, find a different route, so, yeah.
Great, thank you. Anything further? The Student Wellness Advisory Team, which sounds like a fantastic concept. I'm just curious, you mentioned a video that was created focusing on the concept of success and how it's defined. I'm wondering if somebody might be able to expand on that a little bit, and just what was that presentation like?
Yeah, so basically, I think it was based off of a video that they saw another school had made, but it's like the TV studio interviewed a lot of the students, or like a couple of the students in the school, regarding what their definition of success was in regards to like what they believe it is, what they think their parents believe it is, and what they think their teachers believe it is. And I think the goal of the video is to like offer perspective to maybe administrators and also probably most of the student body as to what the goals of a high school student compared to what they think the goals other people are setting for them are at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Interesting. Dr. Sawyer.
I'm also intrigued by the video, and is, and that's a video that's already been shown to the students, or is that still in production?
The video has been made and it has been edited, but I think we're going to show it during Wellness Week, which we're planning in the spring.
Oh, I see. Very good. So at which point, at whatever point it is shown, certainly would love to have the link and we'll want to be able to share that with the school committee as well. And we'll make sure the advisor and the administration will think about ways we can share the, what's happening during Wellness Week when that comes around. But that sounds like a terrific idea, to be able to find different ways, and video is a, is a great medium to be able to share some of those perspectives. So I appreciate that. Similarly, it was great to hear about the various community service piece. That continues to be a great strength of Shrewsbury High School, so congratulations on that. And also the fact that there is a very purposeful approach to developing leadership, not only in committees like this, but overall, leaders of clubs, leaders of sports teams. I know students were invited just generally to participate to or identified by their teachers and through invitations through class administrators. Having opportunities, and I applaud the school for providing the time for that to happen during the school day. Sometimes I think that becomes kind of an extra and not everyone can participate. So to find opportunities to have those conversations and determine, and it sounds like some of the outcomes are really positive, and that's how you continue to build positive culture and climate at the school. So that, that was terrific. But again, we appreciate you serving on this committee. The committee, I know, as well as the administration looks forward to your presentations each time and hearing not only what's going well, but making sure we understand what some of the challenges are. When you talk about the crowding piece, that's clearly one of our strategic goals for the next five years, is to find ways to relieve pressure on the high school in particular, where we have enrollment pressure, and there'll be a presentation later, of course, about relieving enrollment pressure at the elementary level by building a new school. We're not building another high school anytime soon, but certainly a new Beal School is on the agenda. But again, your perspective and your representation of your classmates is appreciated and very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, as ever, on behalf of the committee for not only presenting to us tonight, but for the work you guys do throughout the course of the year, being a conduit for communication from the student body to us. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is the Class of Two Thousand and Eighteen Future Plans Report from Shrewsbury High School. Each year, the high school administration provides data on the post-high school plans of the most recent graduating class. Mr. Bezidlow and Ms. Nguyen will present an overview of the enclosed report, which we've received as committee members, which provides information regarding what students plan to do after graduation. We'll take the student advisory committee sign down, even pull it away. You can just put it on the side. Turn it around. There we go. There we go. You guys are a little old for the student advisory committee.
They did a great job. They're fantastic. Well, thanks for having us tonight and sharing the plans of the class of two thousand and eighteen. Again, we enjoyed another successful year with the class of two thousand and eighteen, and this is going to highlight some of the things that they've done as they left the high school. So in the class of four hundred and thirty-two students, eighty-two percent attended a four-year college, eleven percent attended two-year colleges or technical schools, while seven entered the employment field, were enlisted in the military, or undecided, including gap year.
So in terms of looking at the public and the private matriculations, we have of the students that attended four-year and two-year colleges, we have eighty-eight percent that attended a four-year college and twelve percent that attended a two-year college or technical school. And looking in terms of the public and the private, fifty-four percent attended the public colleges and universities, and forty-six percent attended the private college universities. And if you look at the trend slides, the, the top one, which is the four-year public and private universities, you can see that it's similar to last year. There's an increase of students that are going to private schools. And then the two-year public-private colleges remains pretty much similar from year to year.
We take a look at, of course, gender and where students, the, the entire composite makeup of the class, but also where students attend. And as you look at the charts here, the females, eighty-eight percent of the females attend a four-year college/university, while seventy-five percent of males attend a four-year college/university. And again, the females attending, nine percent attending a two-year college/university or tech school, while males fourteen percent. And the employment or other plans, military, gap year, one, three percent for females and eleven percent for males. We looked at the graphs below. We take a look at the total enrollment and in aligning with all our trends, we have more female students than male students. And looking across the board, the four-year matriculation for gender is a little bit higher this year with the class of two thousand and eighteen than has been in the past. And pretty much has stayed the same relative to your five-year trend for gender, both the two-year matriculations.
So in terms of looking at the geographic breakdown of where students applied and where students actually attended schools, for the class of two thousand and eighteen, there were three hundred and sixty-one students that accepted our students and universities, and they were all ranged from thirty-one different states, Canada, and Romania. We have one that did go to Romania. And in terms of actually enrolling, we had a hundred and thirty-five different colleges and universities represented in twenty-nine different states and the District of Columbia, Canada, and Romania. So in looking at the selectivity, what's interesting about this is we base it on the Baron's Guide selectivity. So it's very similar to most years in terms of the most selective being thirteen percent, highly selective six percent. Oh, I'm sorry, this is in, from last year. Compared to last year, when you're looking at the selectivity, we have less students that are going to the competitive schools, and that percentage actually are creeping up to the very and the highly and the most selective schools. So they're spreading up a little bit more, but pretty much in the similar. So if you look in the graph at the bottom with the selectivity, right in the middle where you see the high columns of the competitive, you can see this year's in the green, so it's a little bit lower, but it's spread across on the upper trend of selectivity.
We also don't want to neglect, we don't want to neglect looking at special students who receive special education services and what their outcomes are as, as a result of going through our programming. So in the class of two thousand and eighteen, there was thirty-seven students for nine percent of that class, which is a little bit lower than most percentages in schools, receive services. Of the thirty-seven students, thirty-eight percent attended a four-year college, forty percent attended two-year college or technical school, and twenty-two percent entered the employment or military or technical school, or employment, rather. Additionally, when we look at, we try to further drill down and look at the private versus public matriculations of students who receive services. Interestingly enough, fifty-six attended public college/university, while twenty-two percent attended private college/university. And it's distributed out in the pie graph on the left, relative to the four-year private, four-year public, or two-year public. And the two-year public is the significantly larger green portion of that pie. While if you look at the bar graphs on the right, the five-year trend, if you see, there's an uptick in the other category at twenty-two percent this year relative to students in this identified of receiving special education services and moving to doing something other than attending a two-year, four-year school.
So when our, when each senior class graduates, before they actually graduate, they complete a senior exit survey where we try to gain as much information about our services and how we can best service the students. So two of the questions that we ask, and this has been consistent compared to last year, we look at the top three reasons for college selections, and the highest has always been location. Most of our students actually like to stay in New England. That's been pretty consistent, although this year they've spread their wings a little bit more, a couple percentages to the south and the Midwest. So it's, it's still an important factor for students, and the second is the cost of attendance, and that is just a reality for any family with the cost of college these days. And then the last one is reputation, and that's still important for students in terms of where they choose to go. I think I think what I've experienced working with students is that going through the search process, the reputation piece weighs heavily in terms of creating that college list, but when the reality comes to choosing the college, the reputation becomes a little bit less so because then the cost factor comes into play and the location comes into play, so. And the other piece that was important are the best sources of information, that students gain information about the whole college process. For the most of them consistently each year, they've identified the individual meeting students, individual counselor meetings. And that, because the process is so individual for each student and where they choose to go and what their future plans are, that's what they rely heavily on. Also in-class presentations, when counselors go into the classroom to work on the college search process and also the application process with students. And NAVYANS is our program, College Career Software Program that we use with students throughout the four years.
Take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Kenzano?
I, I think I ask this question or something around it every year because it's about the, the students who don't go off to college. And this year, the number I think is a little smidgen larger than usual in terms of the number of people taking a gap year and also prep schools. I don't remember that number, it's five, so it's not like it's fifty. But that, and so I didn't know if you had any information about the increase there.
I, I think for some of those students, I think thinking about the, making that huge decision of going to a four-year college or two-year college, for some students, they may not be ready yet. And I think for some of those students, that realization came in more towards the spring of realizing that they need a little bit more time before committing to school. Some students do have other reasons that, other health reasons that they weren't able to go on, but really looked for other avenues. Certainly with the gap year program, some students do apply to colleges, get accepted and asked to defer for a year and, and do their gap year. And some do it for financial reasons too.
This is Fritz.
When we do the survey at the end, we're asking for best, best source of information, are they asked about college visits? You know, how, how does that play in? Because we kind of put a lot of emphasis on students to visit. Is that asked?
That is asked. And we asked, we ask students and we have them rated in a rating, so I just pulled the, the top three. It's a long list, so.
And I think last year when we had our top ten visit, many of them, not many, a few out of the top ten were attending UMass from our top ten and maybe into the honors college there. Are you seeing more students looking at that cost factor as costs are really increasing and even in the public schools, it's increasing? Are you seeing more of that?
I, I'm definitely seeing it as a cost factor for a lot of families, although depending on the schools in terms of the private colleges and the, which tier of private colleges students are looking for, there are, we've seen private colleges match and sometimes give better financial packages than public schools. But I think, I'm going to go back to the location piece. There's a location piece for students and families for students to go far away. But I think once they have all of their college acceptances for them to sit down and look at the pros and cons, I think the cost factor does make a huge effect.
Thank you.
Just along the vein of what Mrs. Kenzano was discussing, I do have a question that was suggested by, to me by Dr. McGee, who's not able to be here with us tonight, referencing, of course, you know, we do have obviously more students than in the past exploring a gap year, probably related also to the cost factor, more students who are maybe considering other options. What sort of avenues, obviously there's quite a bit of focus on preparing students for the college application process and for continuing their education. What sort of resources, if any, are available to kids who might be considering other paths? And are we considering maybe expanding some of our offerings there?
So what we do is because we work so individually with students in determining what their specific needs are, part of our college career portfolio has probably about two to three pages of different gap year programs that students can explore. So the council would sit down and explore what the student would want to do in that year. Most of the conversation revolves around how do we be productive for that year to have a plan? And I, I think the biggest thing is working on what that plan would be, rather than leaving and not having a plan. I think that's the difficult part, but determining what the students' needs are and what they want to pursue.
Yeah, in terms of career exploration too, we, that's embedded within the guidance, classroom delivery, guidance curriculum that's delivered in classrooms. We also have the Career Speaker Series, we've tried to beef up our internship program, we've actually are piloting work study this year. So we have a number of things where kids can go out, students can go out and investigate other opportunities and really find out if that's something they want to continue to explore or say that's not for me and move on. So we're trying to do that. I think part of the challenge with increasing opportunities in programming at that level is a bandwidth issue. This year, the assistant principals and I all have a caseload of students that we're managing relative to the work study. Meaning, we have weekly discussion board posts that we monitor and grade. We monitor their timesheets, we contact employers around their, what they're doing within their program or within the workplace. So that's something that I, I made a decision last year that our school counseling department just doesn't have the bandwidth to conduct that work. I'm not entirely sure that we have the bandwidth either, but I just didn't feel it was appropriate to place it upon, another thing to place upon our school counseling department. We've had challenges this year and it's been seven weeks in, it's been, the conversations and group meetings we've had have been very productive with our, with our students. And I think our students who are participating in that are finding some value within the work study program. The hope is that we can continue to build upon that, but we're really at max capacity, I think, right now. Doing a lot of dual duty between our regular responsibilities and trying to provide opportunities for students within the school, so.
Well, thank you for that and certainly we can understand where you're coming from there. And thank you both for this report. Obviously, this is a critical component of what we as a committee consider in terms of what is the success of our students? What are they doing post-graduation? So we appreciate having, being given the chance each year to receive this feedback. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
I just want to recognize that the, the work that the school counseling department does in particular and the school generally promotes relative to trying to help students and their families find the best fit for what they're going to do post-graduation. I think that, that increased emphasis on career pieces and that's something that's a big part of our strategic plan and that's something we'll be working on in the coming years in terms of more exposure to career, business partnerships and those kinds of things. And whether that's, those are careers that would typically require college or not. But in terms of the, the college piece, that has become such a very amplified process in our culture as a nation. And I know that it would be very easy to slip into the, let's try to push even more kids into getting into quote-unquote more prestigious schools for somehow if that was a metric we were determining, we were going to measure our own success for. And kind of referring back to what the Student Advisory Council said, making sure that we're thinking about how we're defining success and, and having kids go to a school where they're going to thrive regardless of whether it's considered competitive or most competitive or whatever category it gets slotted into, so that they can get the kind of post-secondary education they're looking for and that they're, where they're going to meet their needs and help them to become very successful adults beyond college is really more important than what level of prestige the, the institution might have. And the, the approach that we take to that is something that I'm proud of and I think we need to continue to work with families and students and making sure that there's an understanding that we certainly want our kids to have options and we want them to be able to qualify for the kinds of options that they would like based on the quality of the coursework they can take and all the other elements that go into it. We need to support our kids with that, but we're not over emphasizing, as, as the book title says, you know, where you go is not who you'll be. And I think the more, I, I sense there's been more of an emphasis around that in the last few years and I appreciate that very much. So thank you for the report, thank you for the work that you do to support our students as they make that next step beyond high school.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next item under, on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is related to the Beal Early Childhood Center Building Project. It includes an update, a public hearing and a vote. This agenda item includes several different components. First, we will hear a, an update from Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins with regard to the Beal Building Project, after which we're going to open it up to a public hearing for members of the community to have an opportunity to either comment or ask questions related to the project. Following the close of the public hearing, the committee will then discuss and vote on a proposed resolution in support of the relevant warrant article on the October twenty-second special town meeting, as well as the debt exclusion ballot question to finance the town's portion of the project or actually the project itself that's coming before Shrewsbury voters in an election scheduled for November sixth. So I will turn it over first to Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins for an update.
Thank you. And if you'd give your attention to what's on the screen, this is very exciting. This is an outstanding project. It's one that's going to provide tremendous value to the community. And as we've talked about in previous presentations, I believe that the Beal Building Committee, with the support of our designer and our project management team, has really been able to create a proposed project that is going to really serve our students well for the long term. This site is an outstanding site for a new school, the Glavin Center. For those who aren't familiar with it, that is the state-owned land that is on Lake Street, just a little bit past Route Nine, up behind where the current Buffalo Wow Wings restaurant is, up on the hill behind there. Where Shrewsbury Youth Soccer has a number of fields, agricultural land across the street. You can see from the visual there that it's tucked in with some neighborhoods on the other side that we'll try to gain some access to for walking. It's an outstanding location for an elementary school. We're very pleased that the legislation that Representative Kane and Senator Moore were able to move through and have Governor Baker sign to enable that should this project pass with the town meeting and the voters, that the town will be able to procure that site from the state. It's an excellent use of that land. And again, great, great investment for the town. And when you see that visual, I think it gives a sense of really how, what an excellent school location this is. At this point, I'd turn it over to Mr. Collins and he'll discuss some of the upcoming dates. And we'll talk a little bit about some developments with the project and then we'd be happy to answer any questions and also talk about the resolution that we'll ask the school committee to adopt this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So there are some dates here and I guess I would just lead with, before this activity which we're going to highlight coming up in front of us is, you just saw a representation of on that schematic design represents just about three and a half years of work already completed by town officials in the building committee. These school building projects in partnership with the Mass School Building Authority, state agency, which will subsidize over thirty-four million dollars of this project, have a very long gestation period. So from the time when a statement of interest was submitted in calendar year 2015 until the planned opening of the school in the fall of 2021, that's a six and a half year period. And that is a, a normal period of time that it takes for public school construction. So there's been a lot of effort and energy already and certainly we want to leverage that with the upcoming dates here to have a successful project because it is not a done deal. And the MSBA has not yet committed its funds nor have, you know, have we secured local funding yet. So we have some critical milestones that we wanted to delineate here. And the first is, I know Mr. Girardi is here this evening as well in attendance. You know, one more opportunity, there have been many already scheduled, but one more opportunity for community members, town meeting representatives to tour the current Beal Early Childhood Center and look at its current condition. That's on October sixteenth between five and six P M. Folks are interested in doing that. Mr. Girardi will lead a tour there. Then on October eighteenth is at seven P M., the traditional or typical finance committee review of the special town meeting warrant and public hearing on all the warrant articles. And that would be an important meeting for us as well. Then on October twenty-second, the special town meeting in which the warrant article to authorize the town to take on the debt or issue the bonds to finance this project will be in front of that town meeting. It requires two-thirds of those elected town meeting representatives to vote in favor for us to move forward. And so it's important that we secure that vote and that community members talk to their elected town meeting representatives to voice their opinion as well. And then on October thirty-first, we're hopeful that when we go into this meeting with the Mass School Building Authority and the Board of Directors, that we are able to, Dr. Sawyer and myself and hopefully Mr. Mizikar, be able to carry into that meeting updated information and news that we have secured town meeting support and so that the Mass School Building Authority could then vote to enter into project scope and budget agreement and their financial investment in this project. And then with that, again, we have the November sixth townwide election that requires fifty percent plus one vote to, in a yes vote to approve this project and excluding that debt from the normal tax levy on an annual basis. And if that's successful, then we'll continue on with the project management team to continue to design all of the details of this project and with the expectation that we would open up in the fall of 2021 under this new K through four reconfiguration for all of our schools. So we've got some important milestones in front of us and we need certainly community support for all of these to be positive. The next piece is just some updates. We were in with the Mass School Building Authority last week with our project management team to review the budget, the project budget that will go in front of the Board of Directors. The budget came down a little bit for a variety of different reasons. It came down, it's a total project budget of ninety-two point eight million dollars. It came down by about just under twenty-three thousand dollars in totality. However, the really good news was that the MSBA, in review of the total project budget, increased their level of support from thirty-three point five million dollars up to thirty, just over thirty-four million dollars. So over a half a million dollar increase in, in that project subsidy. So that, really pleasantly surprised by that and looking to move forward there. The other piece is in terms of an update, is that town meeting representatives have received a fourteen-page document in the mail along with the town, special town meeting warrant. And this document includes an overview of the project, budget information, kind of a detailed categorical budget. Provides information on the fiscal impact. And Mr. Mizikar has included six or seven different displays of information with respect to the impact on average family tax bill, the total amount of debt that the town currently has and what this project will do if it's passed. So lots of good information there as well. I think the last thing I just want to point out is that in terms of the process with the MSBA and this thirty-four million dollars is that this is when, when their Board of Directors votes to approve this project and this budget, they're voting a maximum amount of dollars, just over thirty-four million dollars. And then after that, we need to secure local funding within a hundred and twenty days in order to move forward because there's so much demand for project subsidies that they require local communities to act relatively quickly or they're going to have to move on to other needy communities. But also as part of that, they're authorizing a maximum dollar amount so they can do their own financial planning. And so our project team has undergone a number of iterations of cost estimating all along during this feasibility study process. And it's involved the project management team and also independent project estimators. And what's important about that is, is what they're trying to do with the cost estimating is to make sure that this ninety-two point eight million dollars in the project that we have envisioned here represents the current market conditions. So that when we enter the marketplace for a general contractor, that we have approved the right amount of dollars for this project. So that the MSBA, if we're So that the MSBA, if we were to go out to bid, for example, and we had underestimated our budget by, say, $5 million, let's just say that is an example, the MSBA's share of funding is not going to change. They have voted a maximum of just over $34 million, and that's all they're going to fund, based upon our current budget. Conversely, if we go out to bid and we're successful and the marketplace conditions, say, the total project budget, construction budget is a million dollars less, they will decrease their subsidy based upon the percentage of reimbursement that's part of our agreement. So the point of what I'm trying to say is, is that cost estimating is critically important leading up to MSBA approval. And all of these independent reviews and whatnot have been to really try to ascertain what the marketplace, current marketplace conditions are, so that we get the maximum amount of reimbursement from MSBA as possible. So with that said, just some other updates with respect to the current process, and that is that the building committee decided to use what's called a construction manager at risk process, which is an alternative to kind of the so-called hard bid. And it gives us a little bit more latitude and subjectivity in terms of selecting a general contractor. So we have received eight responses for a construction manager at risk company. And the building committee determined that there would be a subcommittee to review these eight proposals, and then shortlist and interview a smaller group and bring a final recommendation for a general contractor to the full committee. I'm on the subcommittee, along with John Masiallo, and Aaron Boucher, and Bob Cox from the building committee, and we're going to be reviewing those eight proposals in detail, along with PMA consultants, our project management team, and Limerick Pagano Associates on Monday afternoon. So that process is moving along as scheduled as well.
So to sum up again, the rationale for this project is that we have too many students and not enough space. This will relieve very longstanding overcrowding at the elementary level, and that's will persist into the future as our enrollment continues to grow. The current building, of course, is 96 years old. It's coming to the end of its useful life, and that the MSBA funding of $34 million makes this the most cost-effective solution to address these different issues. And with that, the community, not only town meeting happening in a couple of weeks, but we're also, or October 22nd, on November 6th, we know that whether it's early voting or whether it's on the actual election day of November 6th, there will be a separate ballot that voters receive. There'll be two check-ins, but there'll be an obvious process that there is a second ballot to take. It's just one question, yes or no, to provide the ability to the town to exempt from Proposition 2.5 the debt that they would take on to, in order to fund that through taxes. And for all the reasons stated, as the superintendent of the school district, I heartily endorse and recommend a yes vote on this project. And with that, again, the dates are critically important, leading up. We hope people are paying attention, and obviously we expect a good turnout and debate, and hopefully a positive two-thirds vote at town meeting on October 22nd, affirmative vote from the MSBA board on October 31st, and then, leading up to, and then on November 6th, a successful yes vote from the community. And so, again, it's, it's, just again, this slide demonstrates the kind of vision that we have created for this project, which I think is outstanding. And with that, I will call your attention to the draft that was in your packet of a resolution for your consideration this evening. And I would ask that after the public hearing portion, that you take this under consideration and vote. But to reiterate, and you have the documents, I won't read it verbatim, but that there are five major points, really, in terms of why this project should be supported. The first being, of course, the 1922 constructed building that is coming to the end of its useful life as a school. It does, just doesn't make sense to invest millions of dollars in this building to bring it up to code, and it still doesn't solve our space problem. It is a long-term solution for having too many students and not enough space in our elementary grades, creating K-4 buildings across the district that would provide the appropriate amount of space going forward. It also creates parity across all the K-4 schools. Right now, we don't have parity in terms of space for music instruction, space for art instruction, special education, and English language learner instruction. And so this will even that out across all of our K-4 buildings. This will provide the opportunity for all of our students to have full-day kindergarten. 95% of full-day kindergarten students in public schools in the Commonwealth have a full-day program. Only 60% of Shrewsbury students do, despite the fact that it's the right thing to do, and there's tremendous demand for it, and this will provide the space for that to happen. And then again, by partnering with the MSBA, receiving $34 million of a state subsidy to make this happen is the fiscally, most fiscally responsible way for this project to happen in Shrewsbury. And that, and for all those reasons, it is my recommendation that you adopt a resolution to urge town meeting members to vote yes on October 22nd, and then during either early voting or at the November 6th election, to vote yes, to provide the town's fair, town's share of the funding to build a new Beale school. And with that, prior to the public hearing, if there are any questions you have about our presentation, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. Community members, does anybody have any questions? I think we'll hold our discussion portion until after the public hearing, but before we proceed to the hearing, does anybody have any questions of a technical nature?
No.
Seeing none, thank you both.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing. We are interested in hearing from members of the community, your positions and feelings, and in questions if you have any with regard to this project. I'll call on interested members of the public who are present. When I call on you, come up to the standing microphone. Please introduce yourself and your address, and keep your remarks brief. And of course, to members of the audience, just a reminder, there are no audible expressions of approval or derision when folks are done speaking. We'll open the hearing at this time. Is there anyone present who would wish to be heard? Mr. Schwab, come on forward. Come up to the microphone. You just want to state your name and address, just introduce yourself, and probably tip that mic up a little bit for your height there.
That works. So my name's Paul Schwab. I live at 38 Browning Road in Precinct 1. My family moved here about six years ago. We couldn't be more delighted with Shrewsbury. It is really a wonderful place to be. We came as a result of the schools, and that's why we're staying here. One of the things that was a bit of a concern as we came to town was kindergarten. We've got two girls, one in second grade, one in kindergarten right now. We did hit the full-day lottery, which if you've experienced that, you know that it's a stressful situation. But we were very thankful to get there, and they're both at Patton, and absolutely love it. Speaking kind of briefly from sort of a logical sort of taxpayer standpoint, Dr. Sawyer, you hit on this a bit earlier, we're at a unique crossroads to take advantage of the MSBA funding of $34 million, which it seems as though we've been through this process a bit before, and if we don't take advantage of that now, we may not get that opportunity again. So I really do stress to folks out there in town that when this vote does come up, should town meeting agree to do their part, that voting on this from a logical standpoint for our kids is, makes a lot of sense. From the standpoint of an educator, so I've been a teacher for 15 years, I teach in Mendenupton right now, and looking at my students that I currently have, we're fortunate enough to have full-day kindergarten there. Hearing that number of 60% of our students having full-day K kind of took me aback a little bit, and realizing now that we'll have an opportunity to up that to a much, much greater number, from an educational standpoint, from an academic achievement standpoint, from a social-emotional standpoint, is so, so critical. And I hope folks will keep that in mind, whether you have kids in the school district, whether your grandkids are in the school district, or whether you don't have them in the district at all, that this is such a great benefit for our kids as learners and citizens eventually. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Is there anybody else in the audience tonight who would like to be heard on this topic? Going once, going twice, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and I'll open it up to the committee for discussion. We do have a draft resolution that the superintendent alluded to us, alluded to a few moments ago before. I am actually going to read it briefly, just for the benefit of folks watching from home, so that they know what we're considering, then we'll have a discussion as committee members and proceed to a vote. The draft resolution before us is that the Shrewsbury community has an excellent opportunity to partner with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to construct a new Beale school. This project will be a significant benefit to our town for the following reasons. Number one, the current Beale Elementary Childhood Center building, originally constructed in 1922, is coming to the end of its useful life as a school. Investing millions of dollars in renovating this building to bring it up to current standards would not be a wise investment, nor would it meet the short or long-term space needs for the elementary grades. Two, the construction of a new 790-student kindergarten through grade 4 Beale school on the site of the former Glavin Center will be a long-term solution to the problem of having too many students and not enough space at the elementary level, where current overcrowding exists and enrollment is projected to increase over time. Three, a new Beale school will create parity across the K through 4 grade span by ensuring each elementary school has sufficient space to provide educational programming, including general classrooms and rooms for art, music, special education, and English language learning. Four, a new Beale school will provide sufficient space so that all Shrewsbury Public Schools' kindergarten students may have full-day, a full-day instructional program. Currently, 95% of Massachusetts public school kindergarten students are in full-day classes, but only 60% of Shrewsbury kindergarteners are receiving the full-day kindergarten experience. And number five, through partnering with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will provide approximately $34 million in a construction grant towards the cost of this $92.8 million project, making this a fiscally responsible approach where the investment is shared between the town and the state. For those reasons, we strongly encourage town meeting members to vote to authorize the town to borrow the funds necessary for the project at the special town meeting to occur on October 22nd, and for all Shrewsbury voters to vote yes on the November 6th debt exclusion ballot question, either on November 6th or during the designated early voting period, to provide the town's share of funding to build a new Beale school. That is the draft resolution that's before the committee tonight. Members, comments, questions, and discussion. Mrs. Fritz.
Just from a comment.
And actually, let me just point out, Mrs. Fritz has been the committee's representative on the Beale Building Committee, and thank you for your service in that regard.
I think from just a comment perspective, looking, we had, we have a problem with space needs going on 20 years. We've had floral first graders housed at Beale for close to 20 years now. This is not a new problem, and now we are looking at what's the most cost-effective manner and solution for that problem. And serving on the building committee, and I know when you did for Sherwood, you're seeing, it's a check and balance. There are so many steps in going through this process with the state, and if we're looking at $34 million from the state, it's that fiscally responsible decision for a long-term solution. And to walk away from that, and then the town's share of having to bring that building up to where it needs to be and not correct any of the problems, to me seems foolish as a taxpayer in the community. I don't want to see my dollars spent that way. And I think one of the, you know, looking at what the building committee's been doing, and I think with Central Office, our project manager, Paul Queen, made a comment last night, that the schematic design with the MSBA, he had the least, it was the least number of comments, if I'm getting this, that he has seen on schematic design from the MSBA. And it's a real testament to this district and the work with Ms. Clowder, Mel Cito, Dr. Sawyer, everybody.
Just to clarify, that means the fewest number of corrective remarks.
Right, right. And I think, you know, looking at that, that's huge. Paul sees a lot of buildings come through, he looks at a lot of MSBA reports, so it's a well-thought-out process. We saw, I guess it was a virtual tour, it was a little different slice into what that building looks like, and how it all will work for students. You know, what is the best educational component of that building? Yes, it's a pretty building, but it's really, what is going to happen within that building is what the community needs to support as well. So I'm fully in support. I think it's a great opportunity, and we would be foolish not to take the state's dollars.
Right.
Mr. Wensky.
Yeah, I agree. Full support of this. I think it's also important for the public to remember, or if this is the first time you've heard this, this is the second time we've been accepted into the MSBA program, right? I think five years ago, for Beale. They recognized it then. We had other needs in the district at the time. So here we are again, and it is a unique opportunity, right? There were 97 applicants at the time, 26 were accepted, and now there's $34 million for Shrewsbury's Beale school project. It's very significant, and as we've heard and said, I think, Beale school, 96 years old, it's, from what I remember, it's 31st year of temporary use since 1987. So I think the need is justified, and it's definitely a very thorough, well-thought-out plan, and definitely thank you to the Beale School Building Committee for a job well done on the design and the thought put into this.
Mrs. Gonzano.
The other piece that is number three in the draft is the fact that it impacts not just the students that go to Beale currently, but it'll impact all elementary school students across the district. It'll obviously be a new building of 790 students, but all of the other elementary schools will also have the alleviation of the stress and pressure of enrollment, and provide all the opportunities that were, that were mentioned in that draft resolution item. And so that's, that's a driving piece for me. This is not impacting just a small segment of our school population, but a rather large the elementary school population is a significant part of our school population, so.
Thank you. And to add to that, and not to belabor any points, but this is a vote that's going to, if passed, this is a project that's going to benefit the entire district. You know, I think sometimes there can be a temptation to say, well, the folks at the new school are going to get everything. This is a question of a new elementary school that's going to improve the capacity situation in all of our elementary schools. It's going to have an impact on classroom size. We have elementary school spaces that are not being used for their original purposes. We don't have designated art and music spaces in some of our elementary schools because of the crowding situation. All of our elementary students are going to benefit from this project. And again, not to belabor any points, but as Mr. Wensky alluded to, in the mid-1980s, there was a crisis in town with a lot of new young families and not enough room for kindergarten. And Beale, which was a very old building with a lot of issues at the time, was opened as a temporary solution. And of course, as the 90s came and the growth exploded, other projects crept to the top of the priority list that had to be done first, but the fact remains, we're in a situation now that was meant to be a temporary solution. Beale has reached the end of its usable life, and I'll just close personally by emphasizing to folks, this is not a question of, do we spend money on Beale, or can we use the money for something else? Beale is going to have to remain priority number one for capital investments, whether we like it or not, and whether we take the state money or not. We've got two options in front of us. We have addressing Beale with the assistance of the Commonwealth, or we have addressing Beale with just our own money, and just a way to bring it up to current day standards when code gets triggered, in a way that we're going to be doing that by ourselves with no participation from the state, in a way that is not going to meet our long-term space needs. This is not a question of Beale or another project. This is a question of Beale with help, to meet the long-term needs of the community, or Beale by ourselves in a way that keeps us down a hole for years to come. So with that, it seems to me that there's definitely a consensus emerging on the committee. Does anyone have a motion with respect to the resolution that has been proposed and is before us tonight? So moved.
Second.
That would be a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yes.
Made by Mrs. Gonzano, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, as before, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to the committee. Dr. Sawyer, was there anything else on this topic?
No, thank you.
Excellent. I believe the next item on our agenda, if I can scroll down fast enough, might be the approval of a minute. No, it is not the approval of minutes. It is also under Finance and Operations. It is a review by Mr. Collins of the fiscal year 2020 budget calendar. Mr. Collins is going to provide us with an overview of his recommendation for the timeline for the development of the next fiscal year's operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Palace. Just what everybody wants to talk about, right? So we've just started the 1819 school year, and as a matter of necessity, we do need to begin planning for the subsequent school year, subsequent fiscal year financial plan. And so what I've laid out in front of you is in fact a draft calendar, so certainly looking for any kind of school committee input with respect to additions or modifications. looking for any kind of school committee input with respect to additions or modifications that the committee might want to see as part of the budget process. Of course, we tried to have a thoughtful and thorough process along the way. I will just highlight a few things that, without trying to read all of these here, but that, you know, the month of October is basically a lot of administrative work internally to do cost estimating with respect to various aspects of our operation, from salaries to transportation to special education. We're certainly going to look to, to work with the fiscal subcommittee of the school committee to develop fiscal 20 budget priorities and guidelines, and finalize this calendar in, in late October. It's important that we do have a fixed calendar so that we have a roadmap for the future. There is a budget workshop scheduled for December 12th, and a second one in the middle of January, and that would lead into Dr. Sawyer's budget recommendation in either January or February. Again, we're leaving that a little bit flexible. We do know that the state, because of statutory requirements, will see Governor Baker's budget, or the governor's budget, I should say, released in, in, in late January of 2019, and then the town manager's budget, we're expecting to see his initial budget plan in the February of 2019. We have a series of presentations scheduled for February and March, and again, if the committee would like other information, happy to incorporate that, but we have special presentations, dedicated time for special education, curriculum instruction and technology, a public hearing in the middle of March in terms of our current status for the fiscal 20 budget, and then the usual Saturday morning meeting with the Finance Committee on March Looking to have the school committee vote any kind of changes to fee-based programs or tuition-based programs on March 27th, and that would allow us to publicize those with parents in time for them to plan financially for the upcoming school year. Another budget workshop scheduled in April, early April, and then Finance Committee, a public hearing again on the annual town meeting warrant on April 18th, Board of Selectmen approval of the budget for April 23rd, and a final vote of the fiscal 20 budget for the school committee on April 24th. All of that, of course, is leading up to preparation of materials for the annual town meeting on, starting on May 20th. So that's a roadmap for devising the fiscal 20 budget plan, and happy to take any feedback. Again, this is a draft, and our plan is to firm some things up with the town manager's office. This was done absent any information at this particular point, so we'll be working with him closely in the next couple of weeks to firm these things up, and certainly incorporate any kind of school committee feedback along the way, and hope to finalize this at your next meeting on October 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Committee members, questions or comments? This is, uh, thank you for the presentation, this is pretty much in line with the approach we've taken in the past, I think it's fairly predictable at this point, so we appreciate the update, and certainly, if any members have any questions or concerns, we can communicate that in advance of either our next meeting or throughout the process. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add on this?
No, thank you.
With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes. We have before us the minutes from our most recent regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, September 26th. They've been prepared by the clerk and approved by Mrs. Fritz, who is our secretary. Members, are there any questions, comments, concerns, corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, without objection, the minutes from September 26th are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this meeting, excuse me, this, this evening, I would entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and reconvene an open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, this motion requiring a roll call vote to pass. Mr. Wensky.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano.
Aye.
Mr. Palich, aye, thank you.